...the meeting in order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Primoroso.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablin, Councilmember Russo, Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Levy.
Here. Happy Thanksgiving belated, everybody. Happy holidays so far to date. Hopefully, everybody had a good Turkey Day and Black Friday and Cyber Monday and Small Business Saturday, and I can't remember all the days now that they have. But all's I know is I went into Target on Friday and there was nobody there at nine o'clock in the morning. So everybody, I guess they opened Thursday at six, so a lot of the crowds went overnight. So for us, male shoppers picking up our wife's gifts on Friday morning, it worked out real well. Well, it was a special thing, yeah. Anyway, you had to put that in there, didn't you? Target is a very fine establishment in our country.
That's right.
Thank you, thank you. But the rest of them will come from the Gardens Mall, trust me. Moving on to announcements and presentations, first up is we have the Veterans' Check presentation.
Good evening, Council. Charlotte Przynski for the record. Let me find my PowerPoint. Sorry about that. Okay. It is my pleasure tonight to talk to you and give you the details about the extremely successful Ninth Annual Mayor's Veterans Golf Classic. It was just an absolutely fabulous tournament. As you know, a lot of work goes into the planning, and the two-day event this year had over 190 golfers. We added the Friday event, which was a huge success, a full field of 60, and then the main event on Saturday, again, was sold out within weeks of opening up the registration. It was absolutely wonderful. We had more than 25 volunteers who assisted in the tournament operations, and I want to note that those volunteers come from your city staff members and our golf course volunteers and a few other volunteers from our community, so it's truly a team event. There's also a volunteer staff steering committee that represents seven departments. And again, I want to note, the people who sit on that committee do this over and above their everyday job because they believe in the cause of giving back to our local veterans. This year, we raised a record amount of $17,500 in sponsorship support. That comes from our community and our business leaders, and you're going to see a few of them later, but without them, this tournament couldn't be what it is. We have two key partnerships with the Big Heart Brigade and the Palm Beach Gardens Police Foundation. I'm going to tell you a little bit more about how they contribute in a minute. But first of all, I just want to show you some pictures. As always, our police-fire honor guard do the Saturday opening ceremonies, and that is under the direction of Sergeant Paul Rogers. It's an amazing addition to our event, and we're so proud of them and how they look. Next, when you talk about a team event, it takes the Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue Department to help us with the ball drop. They bring the ladder truck out, and this is important because the ball drop helps us raise additional funds for our cause. And you'll notice our head pro, Sherry Pla, every year is the one who gets to ride in the bucket truck and drop the balls, so, and I will say that our Mayor Primoroso won the ball drop this year. Yep, yours went in the cup.
Bingo.
Looked like a hole-in-one to me. Next, let's talk about the Big Heart Brigade. They provided all the on-course food and the lunch at the Saturday event. They do this at no cost to the event, and because of that, we're able to grow the dollars that we can give back to the VA Medical Center. PGA National Resort and Spa, they are a financial supporter, but also this year they came as an in-kind supporter, and they were a partner with us in the after-party for the Nine and Wine Event on Friday night. They brought their food truck out, served awesome, amazing food, had servers, served all of the wine, and because of them, that evening was very successful. Last, but definitely not least, our Palm Beach Gardens Police Foundation partner with us on this event every year. They present the activities that we cannot present as a city at the event. Without their support of the event and running those activities, we wouldn't have the donation that we have this evening to give to the Medical Center. They have mutual goals like we do to reach out to the community, and with that support, we very much appreciate their participation. Before I get to our sponsors, I want to do one thing. Mayor, if you could come down so we can present the certificates, and also from the Police Foundation, I would like Mike Melinda and Joe Palucci to come up. They're here somewhere, right over here. Come on over here by our mayor. And sponsors, as I call your name, if you can come up, our mayor's going to have a certificate for you, and then I'd like you to stay to help us present the check. So our presenting sponsors, these are the ones that are the true backbone to this whole event. First of all, the TBC Corporation, they are, as you know, headquartered here in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. They are a long-term supporter of this event, and I have Regina Tracy, who's representing them, so please come up, Regina. Next, a name that you always see is the Gardens Mall. They have been a supporter of this event since its inception, and as you know, they support just about everything we do. Tom Karns, I know is in the audience, Tom, please come up. Next, PGA National Resort and Spa. Again, they've always been a financial supporter, but to help us get off the ground the Friday event, Mr. James Gelfen has been a tremendous supporter this year. Next, our birdie sponsors. Again, these are all financial supporters. The Honda Classic, you see their name too, they're there every year supporting us, and we have Andrew George with us. A new sponsor for this year, BBX Capital Real Estate, we have Blaz Kowacek, close. A new supporter, we hope to have a long-term relationship with them. Come on up, Blaz. I promised them I wouldn't blow that, but I did. Next, one of our newest supporters, Max, if you could come down. Loman Log Group stepped up this year, they were a birdie sponsor for us. Max is also one of our veterans who played, and we appreciate him a lot. CareHere, as you know, has always been a supporter of this event, and they also help us with our Employee Wellness Clinic. And Jason Tomlinson, I'm not sure if he made it. Oh, there we go, Jason, come on up. And then lastly, the Pirates Well, they're a new sponsor this year. Larry was unable to make it, he sends his apologies, but he appreciated being a part of it. So now, before we roll out the big numbers, can I have the rest of the council come down so we can do the check presentation? Don't forget to hide it. And if we could get everybody to kind of slide over here so we'll stage our photo. And in prep of our photo, if we can ask you to make two rows. So stagger a little bit so we can get two rows, a couple people step forward, a few slide to the back. There we go. We're getting better, right? Okay, good. Okay. You're good. Here, we're hiding one in the back, though, let's get Regina. Okay. Helping our local veterans, the 2014 tournament grand total to be donated to the West Palm Beach Veterans Medical Center, $29,114.47, which brings us to a nine-year total of 209,263. It's amazing. And we have the medical director, Director Charlene Zabo, please come up and accept the check on behalf of the council. Oh. Great, it was a wonderful year for us, and as everybody's making their way back to the dais, Director Zabo has a few comments. And again, while everybody's getting settled, next year's the 10th Annual, hopefully to be bigger and better, it's going to be the weekend of November 6th of 2015. Oh, wait, we have one more. We also forgot, the Police Foundation has their check this evening, and they would like to donate that right now. Candace, can we take another photo? It's a real, they have their real check. The city's is in the mail, so. Yeah. But here, why don't we take another photo? Thank you. Yeah, that's a real one. You may. So Mayor, before you go back up, or can you come back up? Do I need to stand at the line? Yes, please. Do you want me to help?
So to all of our sponsors, and if you're still here, thank you so much, and I would like to share with you a certificate that I'm going to give to the mayor, but I also want to share with the group that many of you know that we take care of 60,000 of our well-deserving veterans for their health care. And I have a story that says it's your place, and I've been there since 2006, and every year, we send more and more information out to the community as well as our veterans. So what I have in 2013 was our last update, and what I'm going to have is this year is our 2014 update, and that will include last year's check. And then in 2015, we'll have another one. So the scenario is, what I share with you is that I take care of the medical needs for our 2,000, or our 60,000 veterans, but it takes a community such as we're describing today, all of our sponsors, all of our family members, that I can take care of medical care, but as we know, people still need to house their house, they have to take care of utilities, they have to take care of bus trips. And some of the stories that I shared during the golf tournament was that food such as, food was provided for family members, utilities were paid for, but people also bought clothing so that they could go for a job interview. And the individuals that I had, for examples, they were all under 30 years old. One was a woman that was a single parent with three children, and it was school supplies, it was an outfit for her to go for a trip, and I'm sorry, I get choked up just telling the stories. But in the past year, last year's funding took care of over 2,100 veterans and their families. So again, all of that goes a great deal. And already this year, there's 253. So while you and I are going to the community to celebrate, what this all goes for is people, food, utilities, bus trips, clothes for a future job. So I'm so excited that I know that there will be a future next year. And I noticed I was at the food court. Did you pick that up? You probably didn't even know that was me, but I was like, oh, you got me in a few shots. But what I'd like to give to the mayor, and on behalf of the steering committee, we have a certificate, and all of the volunteers, that again, you had a great group of individuals that participated, but I think this says it all. And just keep in mind, as I said, it's hard to talk to a back here, so, you know, again, to all our veterans that are in the room, we really thank you for your service. How many are in the room? Okay, so again, thank you so much for your service, and West Palm Beach will be there, and next year, many of you, for the women in the room, please join us on the Nine for Nine, great time. She really helps them get over the water. But this is a thank you for our veterans, and this is to our mayor and to all of our members. On behalf of the Department of Veterans Affairs Medical Center, we recognize the countless contributions that the mayor's office and staff of the Palm Beach Gardens City Council have provided to the West Palm Beach VA Medical Center. The city council has raised over $209,000 by hosting the annual Veterans Golf Tournament for the past nine years in recognition of Veterans Day. Funds will be used to support veterans returning from the armed services and will provide assistance to veterans in need of utilities, housing, and other supportive services. Your partnership and commitment to the VA is strongly appreciated, and your contributions continue to enhance the quality of life for our veterans. And it's signed by myself and Mary Phillips, who is with me this evening as the chief of voluntary service. So Mayor, thank you. And again, to the community, one of the key issues for our veterans that are returning, as everyone, everyone may not know, is that as soon as they return and they're no longer serving, the paychecks stop. So that is the point, that I will be there for the health care, but they certainly, the number-one issue people have is a job. And I can, I can speak on behalf of other organizations is that there's a great community involvement to hire our veterans, so I really appreciate that you're doing that. Thank you.
It's a great giving, thank you to staff, all the corporate sponsors, it's tremendous thing that goes on there, so. All right, let's move on to the annual investment update.
Good evening, for the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, and I'm pleased to be able to introduce Mr. Steve Alexander, President of PFM Asset Management. So with that, I'll introduce Steve. Steve, good to see you again.
Good to see you, sir. It's a pleasure to be here again, and hopefully everybody is ready to talk about investments. It's a great segue from checks to interest earnings, so we can talk more about that. I wanted to just hit some of the highlights of the investment report, hopefully you have that in front of you. There's a couple key significant events that occurred throughout this calendar year that will set the stage for this upcoming year, 2015, that specifically will be affecting short-term investment portfolios such as the one we're managing for you. And obviously, that comes down to what is the Federal Reserve going to be doing. As you remember, there was a huge QE3 program known as the $85 billion program that was the bond purchase program on a monthly basis that the Federal Reserve was applying to help reduce long-term interest rates. Well, finally, that program did come to an end here in October. So that was one of the aspects that was helping to keep interest rates lower. The Federal Reserve now has completed all of the easing programs that was generated through the recessionary timeframe that we went through in 2008, 2009. So therefore, now the Fed has really left with wanting to start raising short-term interest rates. Right now, those rates are between zero and 25 basis points, and that's going to be really a significant event in 2015. The other significant event, we do have a new Federal Reserve Chairman, Janet Yellen, who was appointed beginning of this calendar year. She is now in full control of the Federal Reserve and has made a few changes at the way they're looking at when to raise short-term interest rates, and that really has to do with the unemployment rate. She's much more concerned about employment as opposed to inflation. Job is really something that she's concerned about. They have communicated so far that it's going to be sometime in the middle of 2015 before they start potentially raising short-term interest rates. I will caution you, that has been going on now for about six years. We constantly under that guise of potential interest rate rise. However, I think the odds of rising interest rates are really getting higher and higher, and 2015 could be the timeframe. And I want to kind of walk you through how we're positioning the portfolio with that expectation, because we want to make sure we protect your market values going into Here are some of the balances as of 2014, your fiscal year compared from this year to last year. You will notice some changes in the balances, a little bit higher. This has really the result to do as far as tiny expenditures and not associated with the real market values of securities. Some of the highlights in the executive summary that I do want to cover for you is that we did produce about $252,000 worth of interest income in the portfolios over the last 12 months. We've equaled the benchmarks, from a performance standpoint, we've satisfied that requirement in getting to that benchmark. As you recall, this year, we also made changes to the investment policy. Remember, the investment policy was adopted. You'll notice here that we have added additional security types to the portfolio based on the investment policy, so that's in full swing here. Couple of the other big aspects that occurred this past year on a calendar basis is the unemployment rate has been dropping. We are now, right now, we stand about 5.8%. The story behind that, of course, is what's looking at as far as the U6 number. This is a number that incorporates the unemployment rate, but also, more importantly, those that are underemployed. That's still a decent-sized number, around 13%. So when you add the unemployment rate plus those that are underemployed, it's still a sizable number, and that's part of the reason why the economy is still moving kind of slowly. So that's something that we'll be faced with in 2015 as well. I did want to point out that probably the most important part of our strategy in 2015 is going to be the maturity selections, in other words, known as duration. How far is this portfolio going to be out as on the maturity schedule? And it'll show you, we've already reduced that overall position in taking advantage of shorter-term positions in case the market does move against us next year. The short-term portfolio was about $16 billion or so, $16 million, excuse me, billion would be a nice number, I know, was about 16. Forget all the checks you need, I got all the money right here. About $16 million or so, and the yield on cost, you see about 26 basis points. I think the short-term interest rates are going to remain somewhere in this area through most of 2015, so we'll still be dragging as far as, as far as short-term interest rates. The allocation, high-quality commercial paper that we've been utilizing, as well as some other security types, but generally very high-quality, as you're going to see A1+ is the highest rating there. Maturity distribution is six months and under as compared to where we're, last year, we had about 99% of the short-term portfolio. This year's a little bit less than some of the overnight. The longer-term portfolios, so this is the part of the assets of the organization that we feel and working with the cities to make sure that there's assets that can be invested a little bit longer, about between one and three years or so, that we've been investing in, and you'll see that we performed in line with the benchmark pretty much through the entire time we've been managing the portfolio. Where you'll see the biggest change this year compared to last year, as I said earlier, the modification of the investment policy now allows for corporate notes. We've added about 21% in corporate notes. This will give us a lot more flexibility going into next year, so that was a process that we have already worked through the, through the portfolio by adding those securities, reducing the amount of federal agencies. Probably the other big story of 2014 is the sheer reduction of the amount of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac bonds available. The Treasury Department has mandated that the agencies of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac reduce the amount of debt issuance by 15% per year, so we've already seen about $1.7 billion worth of notes not available this year as we have in previous years. So that's going to be a reduction. And so the introduction of corporate securities is a timely thing that gives us still some flexibility to keep the portfolio diversified. And you'll see the credit quality that we're maintaining in the portfolio is going to be A or so better, so good credit quality, as well as a diverse number of entities that are involved in the portfolio. All right, this is the part I just want to quickly focus on. I think this is going to be a main course of strategies going forward. The last five years has all been about credit quality. What does a credit quality look like? And it's been the credit quality discussions that really have been driving fixed income portfolios. That situation has greatly improved, credit quality is better, balance sheets look better. The big issue going forward, the next couple of years, is going to be where's your maturity range in relationship to rising interest rates? And that's where we have to be concerned about protecting your market value. You'll see that we've already moved the portfolio back a little bit for anticipating higher interest rates. Actually, rates did go up this past year, not the short, short-term rates, but rates between one year and seven years are higher this 2014 than they were in 2013. That has already happened. The long end of the interest rate curve, like a 30-year bond, are lower than they were last year, so it's kind of an interesting yield curve compared to where we were September 30th, 2013. So rates have moved up, maybe law folks haven't realized that. So we have moved the portfolio, this 55.3 has been pulled away from where it was last year, and we're, we find that the bonds between the one, two years have the best value within your maturity range, as stated by the investment policy. Our monthly compliance chart as of September 30th shows that all the permitted investments are stipulated by the investment policy, as well as their respective asset allocation rule requirements, we're all in compliance with the investment policy as of fiscal year. And you'll see here on the last page, the various types of investments by their individual issuers. You'll notice that various corporate notes, well-known name brands such as John Deere, Toyota, JP Morgan Chase, Apple, these are some of the corporations that we've added since the investment policy was approved. Those are my brief comments for you today. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I do want to thank our relationship with you as well as with Alan and Mary. We have, we have a good partnership in keeping an eye on this portfolio for you.
The amount of dollars that we have invested, you said was 16?
There's two portfolios. One is a short-term portfolio of about $16 million, and then the long-term portfolio, which is about $25 million or so.
Okay, and on the long-term portfolio, you're going out two to three years?
If you look on this chart, you'll see that the majority of the money is between one and two years. If you add up all the maturities together, it's about 1.7 years.
Well, the bottom line is, is there's X amount of dollars there that we know we're not going to need. When you say market value, you only lose market value if you sell the bonds before they mature.
Right.
I mean, if you're quality organizations, you know, like the Treasury, you're going to get paid in three years, but again, if you have to sell it in a year or two, yeah, you might lose money.
Sure, sure.
So as long as we're projecting out the dollars that we're not going to need unless there's some type of catastrophe that we're not, you know, that happens, and if we go out, let's say, that little longer term, we're going to get additional interest, and as long as we're doing that, I'm fine. I mean, again, I do believe that, I don't believe that interest rates are going up. I might be one of the few, I'm tired of saying that they're going to go up, they're going to go up, they're going to go up.
Exactly, right, right.
I mean, now, especially now that we have oil down, so we're going to have inflation down, and I think the, when you look at Japan, and you look at China, and you look at Europe, and you look at Russia, I mean, those countries are such a disaster at this point, maybe not as much China, but, you know, there's just, people are going to be coming here to try and, you know, there's no need for high interest rates because they're going to want to invest here because we probably have the safest economy in the world right now. So I just look at that, of going out to two to three years with the money that we're not going to need is fine. I mean, that's, that's the way I look at that. In the year, you know, things we're going to need in six months, eight months, a year, well, that's, that's completely different. But, you know, and I still believe we have a bigger deflation problem than inflation. You know, we grew up believing that inflation was the end of the world, and now all of a sudden, everybody's more worried about deflation, which is rightfully so.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's exactly what we've had in real estate, and look at what it, what it did. And if it happens again, it's going to be a bigger disaster. I'm more worried about deflation in real estate, and that can affect us in a reverse way here. I mean, that's, you know, that can really hurt our economy. But I think you're doing a great job. But I think you're doing a great job. I think, you know, you have to do what you're doing, and you have to be conservative, which I like. And, you know, just keep on doing, try and get us as much as you can.
Yeah, I agree 100%. I think the switch to the one- to two-year range is where to be right now, because I think there's no sense going out five to seven years on money. If you're going to have rising interest rates, let's say in 18 months even, I think you're going to lose in the long run on some of those long-term investments. I don't think it's worth it. So the shift to one to two years at half the portfolio, I think is right on.
Yeah, and that'll give us the flexibility, as rates do rise, then we'll have ammunition to buy into it.
Right, right. But I think your overall maturities are good, so that's really good to see. And thanks for the quarter million dollars, we appreciate that from last year. Any other questions for Steve, comments? Great, thank you.
Certainly my pleasure.
Have a great holiday season, thank you for coming.
You too, happy holidays, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item C, we have artistic bus shelters.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for our audience, there are a couple of items on consent that we felt presentations was necessary to bring forward for everyone to see and understand what the staff is recommending as far as those two items are concerned for the public to see, as well as everyone to observe.
For point of reference, the bus shelters is item I on consent. Hello, Don, hi.
Good evening, council members. Don Sonnenborn with Planning and Zoning. Just to give you a little bit of background on the artistic bus shelters, December 5th of last year, there was a presentation made to you all for the artistic bus shelters, an approval of a proposed bus shelter map that provided about 13 possible locations within the city. And then June 5th of this year, the City Council approved an agreement with the artist for the manufacturing of, or the design of the artistic bus shelters. And then tonight, the purchase award for the artistic bus shelters for the manufacturing of those is on the agenda. And then as well, the proposed locations have been further refined. We've done some data collection on those and studied them a little bit further, and also obtained some important ridership information. So the artistic bus shelters, there's three designs. This is design one, they're slightly varied. This is design two, and design three. Now this is the priority locations, there's 14 of them. One is developer-funded, and they run along the main roads of Military Trail, PGA Boulevard, and Dom and Ross Road. Those serve the educational and civic facilities within the city, such as the Palm Beach College, the high schools, FAU, and City Hall. And then we found other high ridership locations, they're located along Kyoto Gardens Drive, Fairchild Avenue, Gardens East Drive, and Prosperity Farms Road. And those serve the areas such as the landmark, downtown at the gardens, and then other medical and ALFUs within the city. This is a list of the 14 priority locations with some of our data that we collected. Many of them are in the rights of way already, a few are on private property, but many of those property owners have already expressed interest in providing easements to the city for installation of the bus shelters. And for the cost of the bus shelters, they're about $22,000 each. So the 13 locations, because one of them is developer-funded, it's on our map, but that total, it's about $286,000, that would be the cost. So the staff recommendation is for approval of the priority locations as they were presented, and the request to move forward immediately with the construction of those 13 bus shelters, utilizing the AIPP funds.
Can you, if you don't mind, go back a couple of slides? I just want to see the ridership numbers. I forgot what those totals.
Sure. The last column is all the ridership information, that's a monthly, on a monthly base.
Twelve to 15,000 range, okay. All right, any questions to staff? Marcy?
Very quick, are they lit?
There's an option to have solar lighting, that's part of the purchase award.
And in some cases, a lot of the locations are already lit by streetlights, so it's not necessary.
Okay.
So some of them will be lit, and some of them will not, depending on what the lighting is, okay.
I just have a comment, and you're probably sick of me saying this, but as I've mentioned it time and time again, I am very excited about this project. I'm excited to see this program come to fruition. We have many areas in need of shelters, and as I've said before, it breaks my heart to see people, children, the elderly, standing in the rain, sun, Florida heat, waiting for their bus, and this is really going to help. I know that it might not be a big deal to some of us, but it really is to them, I'm sure. So I'm really excited to see this. The AIPP, I just wanted to mention, they did support the bus shelter program in general, but they wanted unique shelters. And we originally planned for one artistic shelter, but to be, to take in mind their comments, we actually came up with several shelters and several designs to help incorporate their comments. And I'm really pleased, and thank you guys, thank staff for all their hard work making, taking care of all this and gathering all the data, and I'm looking forward to seeing all of our bus shelters in our city.
Very nice. One final question, inside the actual shelters, will there be maps of the bus routes in there? Or how?
Nothing will be affixed to the shelters. Right now, they currently have the pole with the stop with the route number that's on there.
Oh, right.
So those will be located next to those poles with that information.
Okay, great. Eric, any comments?
I just, you know, this has been a project that's been on the books for quite a while, on a drawing board for quite a while. We had lots of different ways of doing this, and I think we ended up with a really creative way of spending some of this money on good, on this really good cause. And thank you, Marcy, for helping with it. I really appreciate the AIPP, is excited as well, and we're excited to see this happen. I hope it happens within a year. I think we're going to get, what's the timeframe, Don?
Well, manufacturing is eight to nine weeks, I believe. So as soon as we can get those locations all finalized, we'll be forward.
So that means eight to nine weeks, do you say?
Yeah, once we get this approved tonight, we'll ship the contracts off to get the contracts signed, and it's going to go into, we're going to get the actual design, it's a design-build. So we'll get the actual design and the engineering of the shelters, once those are approved, it's nine to 10 weeks for fabrication. And then during that time, we'll be pulling permits that we need to permit and try to execute the easement agreements that we need.
So by summer, we'll all be up?
Yes, we're going to go for the easy ones first, stuff on the city-owned property, and the State College is already dedicated, or shown for the land, and then, once we get the other easements, those will go in place.
Okay, good. Good job. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I do have one comment card, and I'll let Mr. Tom Carnes come up and speak now. You're the only comment card of the evening, so take the full three minutes or more, yeah.
I'm here tonight primarily representing the PGA Corridor Association. And as you know, our mission statement is to preserve, enhance, and promote the PGA Boulevard as the premier business corridor in Palm Beach County. I want to thank you all for coming out to, most of you were out for our annual get-together. That's always nice to get out and meet the businesses and the residents of the city. So thank you for attending that. And I want to give you a heads up that Hank, we'll be having our annual economic forecast with Hank Fishkin. And I think that's on the 7th or the 8th, I don't recall, but you'll be getting a notice of that. I think that's going to be at the Marriott, and it'll be a breakfast. So.
7th or 8th of January 7th?
I have it as the 8th, I have it as January 8th.
January 8th.
Thursday.
It's official, and the mayor says it's the 8th, it's definitely the 8th.
Because there's going to be food there.
There'll be food.
He knows when.
And our council meetings that night, it's a very exciting day for us.
He knows because of the food, not because of the council. It's not.
So one other thing I want to mention, while talking about the PGA Corridor, well, actually, this is all PGA Corridor, is that Dr. Gene Whibley, the current president of the PGA Corridor Association, is being considered to take over BBSC, all campuses. And there will be, next Wednesday, December 10th, from 9:00 to 11:00 in the Science Building. And they have invited the public and the business community to come and speak and give their recommendations or who they think should be taking over the college. So please, if you can, you know, if you've got kind things to say, please try to attend and say them.
Give us the dates again?
It's December 10th, next Wednesday, from 9:00 to 11:00 in the Science Building. And I think the Science Building is usually where we have our breakfast. And then on the bus shelters, you know, the Corridor Association's been involved in this for a long time. Eric had it, and kind of ran with it, and we looked at those, and those were the ones that were all unique. And then Marcy came up with this one that's, that we kind of worked out and made it transparent and everything, and we think this is great. This is the way to go, totally transparent, and minimizes the cost. The cost to go with the unique design was going to be triple or quadruple, the cost and the maintenance and the construction and the whole thing. So we're just thrilled with that, that the minor changes is the way to go. And also, I think I heard that Palm Beach State College is going to be one of the first shelters to go in, or a couple of the first shelters to go in, and that is sorely needed with the students out there in the rain. You see them all the time. So thank you very much, I think you're, you know, stay the course, and I think things are going great.
Thanks, Tom. Happy holidays to you as well.
Barbara Grossman, 161, 42 Drive, Palm Beach Gardens. Just had a quick question about the ventilation in the summer in the bus shelters. Will there be ventilation, because it could get so hot in there? That was the only question I had.
That's okay, Todd. Is it open?
There's no mechanical ventilation, there's an open roof, and there's an open passway through there to allow for regular ventilation, but there, most of them will have power to them, so there is no mechanical ventilation. It's more like a standard bus shelter you see anywhere throughout Palm Beach County. Typically, none of them have mechanical ventilation.
But there'll be some air hopefully flowing through there, it's not a closed structure where there's.
Yes, all the structures are open completely.
Full closed cans in the top.
Yep, completely in the middle, and then there'll be air to pass below it and above it.
Okay. All right, is that good, Barbara? Did you get the name? Happy holidays to you, even though we got a hug earlier, but same here. All right, any other questions on the bus shelters? David, I made a bet with Ron and I lost, because you didn't ask about the metals and the screws and the dynamics, and the eco-soil and the rocks, so.
It's not going to be number five steel?
Yeah, that's what I said, where's the steel and all that?
They're all aluminum with stainless steel fasteners.
You let me down, David. You let me down tonight. This is a big opportunity for you to step up on that.
And it's all solar lighting, right?
If we have it, yeah.
Green.
Okay, next up is the item D, the Neighborhood Improvement Assessment Program at 40th Terrace and Sunset Drive. And as a point of reference, it's item K on consent. You're up, Todd.
Good evening, Council. Todd Engel, City Engineer. This is just an update of where we are on the 40th Terrace and Sunset. We do have item K on the consent agenda tonight, which is the award of the water installation and the roadway installation for Sunset Drive and 40th Terrace. Where we've been in the past, we have a complete design, we have permitted through all the required agencies that we need. We have accepted the roadway from the county, that was done two weeks ago, they just sent over the final document, and they'll be making their final payment to us next week. As far as the assessment process, we've started a legal process, we'll be set to start collecting 2015, which will pay for the rears of the current money that we're spending now. Construction award again is tonight under item K. There'll be two contracts, two separate contracts, one for the water, which is a piggyback with Seacoast, and the other one's for the roadway construction, which is a piggyback with a contract with Northern Palm Beach County Improvement District. If all that passes, we're looking to start construction January 15th and be completed by August 15th of 2015. Here is the actual board that was presented the night that we had the public meeting here in this room, and then subsequently to that, you guys voted to go water and roadway only. These are the actual costs associated with that, and with the adoption of the assessment, our maximum that we're able to spend is $1,545,000. The top lines represents the soft costs, the survey, the engineering staff time, legal time, and any roadway acquisition or any acquisitions that we needed. What we're awarding tonight is the roadway cost, the initial estimate's $604,000, we're going to award $551,000 to Cheatham. And the water, which is the initial estimate, was $428, and the actual contract is going to be $427, and that is the D-VAN Corporation. There are other costs associated with this, we've rolled in the one-time connection fees, as well as two meters, to go with each property, because mainly all the properties are duplexes, and that's going to be, and their impact fees are in there as well, the $3,500 plus the actual connection cost. So that will help them not having to come out of pocket with that, they'll pay over the 20-year assessment. And we also have a contingency in there of $124,000. If everything works out well, we won't touch that contingency at all. So our goal is to come in under the original amount that we estimated. Here's just a picture overview of the project, and we are required to the Health Department and the Seacoast Utilities, and our own fire department to loop the lines. The loops will be created through Military Trail, through a connection just behind Publix there, and they'll have to loop back down Sunset and up 40th Terrace. With that, the city's required to give several easements to Seacoast. We've obtained most of them, the small ones with the fire hydrant easements that we need, we don't need any fire hydrant easements on 40th Terrace. The one, the Sunset House, board's already voted to approve this one, and that's the connection to the water loop behind Publix. And the other two are through Kevin Easton's property, he owns the last five properties down here. This one is a water easement, and this is a T-turnaround, so our fire trucks can, if they go to the end of the road, they can physically make that turnaround down there. There'll be a cul-de-sac down at the 40th Terrace, so we don't need that, we already have the right-of-way for that one. So that's where our problem lies. Those are the only two or three, actually, three easements that we're unable to obtain at this point. We have commitments on all other easements. We met with Seacoast this week, and the 20-foot easement that we have at the end of 40th Terrace, we're able to reduce that to 10 feet to try to minimize the impact of the property. That 10 feet is not a buildable piece of property, it's inside the setback, so we wouldn't be allowed to build it. He is asking for payment of this easement here, as well as the two easements that will be required for the T-turnaround for our fire trucks down at the end of Sunset. So this is how this will work, that easements are here. The blue, we are obtaining, we already have obtained a Palm Beach County roadway or canal right-of-way permit to create that loop, and so this is the two missing sections to complete the project. We do have a plan for the time being in order to construct the project without this easement, but it will not allow for a loop which is required for the project. And I'll let Max Lowman go over the legal side of what we need to obtain these easements. Max?
Well, as Todd has said, basically what we have here is we, everyone else has agreed to grant the easements to Seacoast through us at no cost. Through conversations with Mr. Easton, it's come to our attention that he is going to require some type of compensation for the easements. He's the only one asking to be compensated for them, since they really don't have a ton of financial value, but he's asking for money. He hasn't named a particular price, but he's demanded payment of some sort. We've attempted to, we contacted him back in October after he made that demand and said, and provided a letter to him explaining the possibilities here. The cost, whatever cost of the easements, it will be rolled into the cost of the project and then shared amongst the people that are assessed. We originally, this easement that's depicted on the screen was going to be a 20-foot easement, and Seacoast said that they could make do with the 10-foot in an attempt to try and minimize the cost, since Mr. Easton was asking to be compensated. He had said that he wanted two estimates done, and then that he would accept the highest estimate. That's not the way it works, even in eminent domain or condemnation, it doesn't work that way. So we had offered to get a couple of estimates, and then pay him the average. Then when Todd finally got ahold of him the other day, he finally returned our call, we hadn't heard from him in over a month, he had proposed to offer an easement somewhere next to a building in his property, which doesn't really get the job done for us, it was going to be immediately south of that building, and he was offering the 20-foot easement. I can only surmise that that suggestion by him was because it would be worth more money ostensibly than the easement all the way to the south. ostensibly than the easement all the way to the south, since 10 feet of that easement is going to be setback. Be that as it may, as I said, Seacoast has said that they could get by with the 10-foot easement. And at this point, he's not offering the easement where we want it. So, what I'm asking for the council to consider this evening is authorizing us to pursue eminent domain proceedings to condemn the 10 feet that we need so that we can take it, as well as the two red squares you see there, the pieces of property needed for the fire truck turnaround through a condemnation proceeding.
I have a question. This might be silly, but...
Hold on, hold on. Are you done, Max?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. Okay. Just for clarification, you're telling us that Kevin Easton, the one that brought this neighborhood to our attention, the initiator, the person that asked us for help in this project to add water and help with paving in his neighborhood, is now saying that he is not willing to give the required easements? He wants payment for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, okay, so I guess also, in addition to that, we explained to him that that's like holding this neighborhood hostage until we get the easements? Is he aware of that?
It has been explained to him that, I put it in writing and explained to him twice now, that having to pursue a condemnation proceeding could potentially delay the project and it will most certainly add to the project's costs. Not only with the cost of pursuing an eminent domain proceeding and/or the purchasing of the easements, but also any delay in construction exposes you to the risk of project costs. Now, from speaking with our city engineer, the piping is going to be valved at each end where the southern, I'll just call it the 10-foot easement for ease. It'll be valved at each end, so that, it's my understanding, if you approve the contracts this evening, we would be able to proceed with construction in January and do everything up to that if we haven't. It's about a six-month process to put all the piping and the roadway in, so we would be able to get to that point, and hopefully by then, we will have obtained the easements. But the risk of editorializing it is a bit ironic, yes, that the progenitor of the project is holding it up now.
So, and he's aware that the cost of paying him, even though everyone else gave it, everyone else gave the easement, and he's asking for money for that easement, he's aware that those dollars have to be spread out to all of his neighbors, that his neighbors would be paying him for this easement? He's aware of that, correct?
If he read my letter and can comprehend that English letter I put in there, because that was pretty simple, then yes, he would be aware.
So, he's costing his neighbors more money?
He should be aware of it. Yes, it was made painfully clear in the letter.
Well, I mean, that is absolutely ludicrous. So, number one, I would make a motion to go through the eminent domain process, but also, I'd like to have consistent updates because, I mean, if it's going to cost, you know, money that's worth way more than this whole neighborhood, I mean, I don't know what the cost would be, but I would say forget the whole thing if we can't, if it's going to cost, if the costs are going to far exceed the value.
You can't forget the whole thing, Marcy, because this is the right thing to do.
I just don't want to hold the neighbors hostage.
The sad part is, for all the work and all the dedication he put into accomplishing this, I don't know what he now looks like to his neighbors. And I think, I think that when Max goes back to him, and I'm hoping that basically, this just becomes a bad dream, and come when Max talks to him, he realizes that he then is the obstructionist to something that he helped create that was great for the whole neighborhood.
Right.
And I think that after he really thinks about it, then he'll come around. If not, then this was a big mistake.
I've received so many calls from people in that neighborhood asking when this is going to happen because they want the water. They're excited about getting clean, fresh water. And now, we have a neighbor who started this, who helped generate that excitement for the neighborhood, and now he's the one holding this whole thing up, saying he wants money for it. I just don't understand.
There's something else I want to put on the record, too. Max, also, there will be legal fees incurred both by the city and by Mr. Easton. Should this go through, the city bears those costs, and that would then be passed on to the neighbors also. So, that's an unnecessary cost if he just, if we have to go through eminent domain, we have to incur legal fees. That would also be passed to the neighbors. So, he's also making the project more expensive than is necessary.
Okay, well, let's, let's...
I will second the motion.
Let's, okay, we have a motion, second, let's have some discussion now, if you don't mind. I just, I have some questions I just want to get answered, so I understand this, Max as well. The eminent domain process is six months? Is there a timeframe?
It depends. I mean, this should not be very complicated in an eminent domain proceeding. Initially, we have to, we'll have to get an appraisal. I have to, I'll have to craft a, an official written offer to Mr. Easton, and there's certain information that I have to provide to him as a taking entity. We have to provide to him under the law, and we'll provide that information to him, and we might be able to reach a settlement. I'm hoping that maybe even before that process, we might be able to negotiate something with him, but we haven't been very successful thus far.
But those costs and a potential settlement would have to be in the loan?
It will be loaded into the, it will be, it's going to be costs, because this is part of right-of-way acquisition and under the process under our NIA program, and it's right there on the line. Up until this point, we haven't had any right-of-way acquisition costs, but now we will, and they would have to be rolled into it. You know, it's, that would have to happen. We have to send the letter, the official offer, and if he rejects that, then we would go to a value certification. If he rejects it, then it becomes one of these things where we get to go through the formal taking procedures. He could then, we can get, we can get an order of taking, because then the judge can certify the value, or he could hire, you know, attorneys and fight it and sue, saying, well, we disagree on the diminution of value of the property, or they disagree on the appraisals. I think that would be really kind of fool's folly. I don't think it's going to take the most brilliant property appraiser in the world to figure out what the value is. It's a 10 by 120-foot strip of land. It's relatively small, and the diminution of value in his property should be relatively small. So, really, under these circumstances, it should be what's classified as a quick take, which could be three months. If it gets drawn out, it could take six.
Okay.
I don't see it taking much longer than that, but I mean, the courts, you know, I mean, who knows?
So, let's assume that's the process we go. In terms of construction, when we, if the contracts are approved tonight and we're moving forward, when will we start construction? Even though we still have this issue outstanding, we could still move forward with?
Yeah. We'd start construction January 15th. We've got thousands of feet of pipe to lay, and we would stop at the 120 feet, the only thing we have left to lay.
Okay.
We'd stop at the valves and the easy connection. We'd go connect back to the valves and make that final connection, but that's the reason to hold the entire project down.
Right, we could start, we could start the work going forward, and hopefully, if it's an imminent proceeding, we can get some timeframe wrapped it all in, and hopefully the project doesn't stop. The other question I have is with regards to the assessments to the property appraiser, what's the date we need to give them a final number? Because that, if the costs change, if they go up, down, what is our timeframe? June, do we have to get them an assessment figure?
I can't remember right off the top of my head. I think it's July is when we would, is when we would need to get it. It's usually when the target...
So, in theory, we could be done by July with construction, right?
Yeah.
So, we'll be, we'll know the costs, and we're all in.
Our anticipated date is August 15th. If there's no delays or anything, we could do that regarding if we can make that final connection.
Okay.
We'd at least have the price.
And even if we don't have a rock-solid number based on these acquisition costs, we can, we can always adjust the assessment, and we can go a little higher if we have to in that initial assessment. If we haven't got the, if for some reason this proceeding hasn't been closed, we haven't gotten the property yet through the eminent domain, and all those right-of-way acquisition costs haven't been qualified, we could go a little higher, and then we could always adjust it down the next year. Or if it's a little low, we can always adjust it up.
Yeah, I'd rather not go adjusting upward.
I know.
I think we had to have a conclusion of figure in our head, come up with that assessment in the following year. We could adjust it downward if some of these things come to fruition and we don't have to pay those costs.
Yeah, ideally, we always figured that we'd have, we'd have rock-solid numbers going in, and we would, this is not the kind of assessment that normally would fluctuate annually, and we would be able to do it, but this kind of is throwing a wrench in the works.
That was actually, those were very good questions, and now I have another question.
Well, thank you.
We've done what our questions were.
Construction, no less. I had some good questions.
Yeah. Now, first, is, in my experience, a loop system is very typical, and it's required all the time. So, this is not a surprise. We had all, and I remember saying it, or you guys talking about it when we had our workshop. So, it was very, the turnaround, the cul-de-sac, the loop system, the utilities, you had the pipes pretty much conceptually drawn when we had the workshop. This was all known from day one, correct?
Yep, absolutely.
And in addition, do we have to notice, or maybe we should notice, the rest of the neighbors and let them know that there is an additional cost that was not expected because they're the ones that are bearing the cost? And I'm talking about the neighbors, so just let everyone know that this is additional cost.
Well, you know, I don't think we want to incite the neighbors against Kevin Easton at this point.
Not against, I'm just saying, I'm just like, oh, cost in general.
But that's what it will be doing at this point. I think we should just try and let it work out, and let's see what it is. I don't really want to create, I don't like dividing. I mean, I think that's the, I'm not, I'm not told Max can talk some sense to them. Eventually, they're all going to find out, and eventually, that's all going to happen. But I don't want people knocking on his door, you know, creating...
And I don't want that either. I just want them to be there.
Well, right, and I think, I think we would be obligated, we would be obligated to notify the homeowners if the assessment was going to be higher than what they anticipated.
Yes.
So, if there's some monster number that gets thrown in here at the last minute, then I think we have to notice them. But if it's a smaller dollar amount, we're already under budget now with some of these cost estimates, so we're in a good position. So, hopefully, that will maintain that position. The assessment will be lower than what they thought, but I think if you, if you go higher, then, yeah, I think we definitely need to go back and notice the owners.
That's the last point, is that...
But it shouldn't be a personal thing. We don't need to be, you need to state the reason why, just, you know...
I saw what they are.
Right. The facts are the facts, but I think we need to know that it's high.
You know, we didn't, we didn't create this situation. Someone else did. Okay. I just have one question, if I might. Max, in your legal opinion, we will prevail on this eminent domain. Will we not? I mean, we're not, we're not going to go down this road and then find out we're going to get tied up forever on this.
It doesn't appear to me that it would be that kind of a situation. This is what should be a relatively simple takings if it has to go that route. This is a relatively small piece of property. We're not taking the entire property. It's clear based upon the design of the plan and the Health Department's requirement for a loop system, Seacoast's unwavering desire for a loop system. I mean, we could sit here and Todd could, you know, regale you for the next 15 minutes about all the pitfalls of a deadhead system. There's public safety issues, there's health issues, there's system maintenance issues. And again, the Department of Health is very strong and hard over on the idea of a loop system. So, we meet all the legal burdens and clear those hurdles with regard to the statutory requirements for the needs of the system. It's going to us, and then we will be conveying it to a public utility, which is all permissible under Chapter 73. It's part of the checklist that you go through to meet the requirements. So, yes, I have almost no doubt that we would prevail in the taking because it's necessary and it's not, it's a partial taking. We're not taking his entire property.
And we want to do the system because we want to do it right the first time in this neighborhood and not have any issues down the road. This is the way to do it. So, Marcy, anything else? I'm sorry.
No, I'm just shocked, and I can't believe it.
Todd, I have one question to help the mayor out here. What's the construction material of the piping?
It will be ductile iron pipe. No dissimilar metals will be touched.
I feel a lot better now. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions for Todd, the attorney, or the city manager? Okay, I've got a motion and a second on the eminent domain process. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is 5-0, so thank you for the updates, and we hope in six to eight months, this will be done, and we can go out there and cut some ribbons and see how the neighborhood likes it, so. Moving on, items of resident interest in board committee reports, and I'll start with David tonight.
Okay, we had a League of Cities meeting for November, which was held in Boynton Beach. And the most important issue that we took up at the League of Cities meeting was we appoint Marcy Tinsley as a regular member of the Treasure Coast Planning Council. So, congratulations, Marcy. Speaking of which, let's go to talk about the Treasure Coast Planning Council, where I'm proud to say that 30 of our cities passed resolutions. Five of them have resolutions on the board, which probably don't need to be passed. One city didn't take any action, and one city tabled it, and one city, the very first city, wrote a letter. And that would be our city, and we did prevail at the, with the county commission level, and we are going to be staying with Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council.
The way I write my letters scares people.
It does.
Max gave me a little guidance, but it's just the way I put them together.
It was your letter that really took it over the top. So, in other things that we did, we did have a presentation from the C-51 Finance and Governance Workshop, the Education Committee, and I know, Marcy, you're very interested in this. I recommend that, maybe this is something that we can do as a council, going into the elementary and the middle schools and talk about city government, because they don't really get any issue, any information. The league used to do that, and then we stopped doing that. I actually gave two presentations at Duncan Middle School on, you know, how city government works, you know, why Burt's the mayor, you know, how we get elected, what are our terms and everything, and threw a little bit of city quick trivia in there, which is, by the way, here's our, here's your trivia question. What are the two oldest cities in Florida?
Levy County.
City of Augustine is one of them, and the other is Pensacola. They were both incorporated in 1822, after the state became a territory.
But I do see junior achievement is in some of the schools teaching about...
And you do, and, yeah, and you do the...
Great program, but there's not, there's not enough people to do them, so I agree with you. It's good to get out.
I'll make a motion to send David to all the schools.
Quick second.
So, also, I wanted to mention before, Marcy, as I actually get the opportunity to take something off of Marcy's list, did we have a great tree lighting last night or what? That was just absolutely fantastic. Really enjoyed it. Kudos to the staff for moving that inside so rapidly that I don't think anybody actually noticed that we were supposed to have it outside originally. It was just a wonderful event. Thank you to Santa and Mrs. Claus, who may or may not actually be in the audience. We don't know because we don't really know who they are. So, thank you so much for a wonderful event. I'd like to thank Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center for sponsoring the event. I'd like to thank Burt for his wonderful speech that lasted less than three minutes, and it was just really a wonderful event, and the kids had a great time. And when you walked in, that was the picture of us at the event, so, you know, just, just what a great event for our citizens.
David, you're really covering for Eric on this because he's the one that messed up.
Really? Oh, yeah, with the weather.
The vice mayor's in charge of the weather, and he messed up.
No, he didn't, because we lit the tree outside, so he...
I was going to make a...
But if you could have got the rain to stop a little earlier, we could have had more people.
He messed up because there wasn't, there wasn't enough Chick-fil-A. That's where he messed up.
As we all know, I've been on this...
He always comes to have the food with him, I know.
You know, as we all know, I've been on this council, I guess, way too long, but anyway, in the 25 years I've been on the council, first time that I've ever had any rain.
Really?
First time. First time.
Yep, it never rained.
Well, it's all your fault, Eric.
Yep, well, at least I stopped the rain by the time, you know, everybody got there.
That's because he was here early. He was there an hour and a half before the tree was lit, and he was working on getting the rain out of the area, and he did a great job with that.
Well, I, you know, I was going to, when it came my turn, I was going to thank the staff for doing such a phenomenal job of bringing everything in one hour, about an hour and a half, the most, because I got there early, and I watched these guys bring, and gals, come in, bring everything inside and set it up inside, and it was just phenomenal. They did a great job. Can't thank them enough. Yep.
With that, I'm done.
That's it. Marcy?
And they did it, and it seemed like it was already meant to be inside.
It already meant to be, yeah.
Right, exactly. So, thanks for taking that off my list. Check, I ditto everything that you said. And first, I'll start with the first thing that we, I did, actually, at the beginning of the month, which was, or last month, which was attend the nine-to-wine ladies-only Mayor's Golf Tournament. I'm proud to say that I did not win last place. Yes. So, that's a first. So, anyway.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You guys did an excellent job putting that together. And just to thank, that, in concert with the Mayor's Golf Tournament, $209,000, that's huge. What a great thing that we've been able to do to give back, and that's awesome. Thank you guys very much for doing that. That was a great addition to the Mayor's Golf Tournament. A lot of fun, and I think we're going to get double the amount of women to play next year. Veterans Day, another great success, like I said. We had a wonderful Veterans Day concert here, right here in our city hall at Veterans Plaza with the Palm Beach Gardens High School Pizzazz, did a great job performing. We had a great luncheon, all of us, at the Scripps facility, where we had a chance to learn about their fascinating work, and also had a chance or an opportunity to discuss how we can help them in their philanthropic future, and help them to be here in our city for years and years to come. So that was a great luncheon. I attended the Education Advisory Committee, where we discussed our role in helping as ambassadors to our city and to our educational facilities here. We had many of our teams competing in the Palm Beach Soccer League Early Season Playoffs this past weekend, or not this past weekend, but a couple weekends ago, a great start to the soccer season. I want to recognize our two champions and three finalists from the playoffs. Our U-8 boys, trained by Victor Lindstrom, hopefully I will not kill these names, and Lindsay Balo, finished an undefeated season with a 6-2 victory over Wellington in the championship game. Our U-9 boys, trained by Eric De Souza, defeated Mako 3-1 in the championship game. Our U-9 boys, trained by Bryce Amidolia, hopefully, that's probably bad, sorry about that, made it to the championship game before being defeated at all. Our U-10 boys, trained by Henry Taramona, made it to the U-11 championship game. And our U-14 girls, trained by Neil McKay, made it to the U-15 championship game. And for tournament updates, there are currently 99 teams registered. Excellent for the first year, and everything is shaping up well for the December 6th and 7th tournament. I said that, I promised the mayor that I would make sure to mention that, because we had our Recreation Advisory Board meeting this month also, where we swore in our two new members. We have a new engineer on the board, well, he's not a new engineer, but new to us, anyway, and I think that he will do a great job helping us out. And most of us attended the BDB Luncheon, where our very own Natalie did an excellent job of marketing our city and providing an update of our city's latest development approvals. She was a panelist, in my opinion, the best panelist out there, and did a great job answering the questions. Last, but definitely not least, I want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season. As we spend time with our families, please remember that the joy of brightening the lives of others, easing someone's burdens, filling empty hearts, and bearing generous gifts for the less fortunate is truly the magic of the holiday season. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Joe?
I'm going to steal her sheet. I liked that last comment. She's got that all written. I don't want to use that again. That was great writing. I'm stealing that sheet before the night's over. I also attended that luncheon with Dr. Paulson, who's the new president of Scripps, and that morning, we had our North County Economic Development Meeting at Scripps, where two of the scientists, rock star scientists, that are making great strides at great cures. In fact, one of the scientists there, Dr. Disney, he came up with, he's got a way to attack this ALS, which is unbelievable. He's got, this gentleman will probably be a Nobel Prize winner at some point. That's how talented he is and how, but I will tell you, it was a great, and the whole council was at the meeting with Dr. Paulson, but I will tell you, the meeting that we had in the morning was very enlightening. And I can remember Jack Welch, the former president of GE, that, one of the best comments he ever made is, "If things are happening out there faster than they're happening in here, then we have an issue." And unfortunately, when we talk about Scripps, things out there are entirely different when the day Scripps came here. And this is something that we here, who have a vested interest, need to address. I've had many discussions with elected officials, including our Commissioner Hal Valaschek, and we need to go and attack this issue. When Scripps came here, they had an agreement with Pfizer that I think paid them $200 million over five years or something. Pharmaceutical companies aren't doing that anymore. And we're in a situation where funding has to be the top, let's say, thing that has to be accomplished. And we have fortunately, we have quite a bit of philanthropy here in the area. That's why they're here, because they're close to Palm Beach. Not to mention, I believe Wellington has more wealth than Palm Beach, from what I've heard or read. So, we need to attack this, and this is something that the business community says they want to get behind. The one thing that needs to get progressed is the FAU. The FAU campus needs to be expanded, and I think through the help with the state and the governor, maybe that can be accomplished. We have a great dynamic president there now at FAU, and I think that's something that could be really positive. The problem that we're having is, when you take a look at, there have been many cures that have come out, many drugs that have come out of the Scripps campus. But the problem is, is if they come out of the Scripps campus, and they go to Boston, or they go to Carolinas, if they go somewhere other than the state of Florida, it's an issue for us. And we have to address that and attack that to make sure that we're getting what we need to have to make this whole biotech hub work financially. And these are the things that we need to be working on and becoming important. And part of the problem is, is they'll say they're not going to stay here because we don't have a wet lab, okay? We don't have the proper, let's say, real estate. And that's something that, and in my discussions with the business community, I says, "We can't do everything, but maybe we can help create certain things." And they need a better FAU, they need a wet lab, which is desperate, because we need to keep, we need to bring the drug companies here to manufacture the cures that are being developed here. It doesn't do us any good to have a cure developed here and being manufactured in Massachusetts. I mean, that's really the whole issue, and that's something that has to be addressed. We have Max Block and Scripps, there's no one else anywhere that has that joint position. So, this is something that, again, we're going to see, and we're going to talk, we've already made a major commitment to. We need to now finish, like, I've had many discussions with Commissioner Valaschek on this, because we need to address this, and this needs to be, go forward.
Haven't they exceeded their goals, as far as timing and as far as.
Well, you know what, though? That's, you know what, yeah, but they're achieving their goals, but are they going to be able to keep what they've already achieved? And I believe that if there's not changes made, okay, that they're not going to be able to, because they only have X amount of funds to deal with. They don't have the funding source. As I think I mentioned in a previous council meeting, the money is not coming in like it did from the federal government. There's just not funding it at the same level that it was. It's kind of scary for us, because we're, especially me and Eric, because we're getting closer to need all those drugs they're going to come up with. So, it's, but that's the tough part, that they're not getting the funding. So now, if you, now you really have to have philanthropy take over, where the funding, okay, used to come from the government. And the other problem is, is, as we all know, they spend a lot of energy on things like Alzheimer's and, what's the other word, overeating, you know, disorders, you know, disorders that basically come from the brain and so forth. And there's not a lot of philanthropy for that, you know what I mean? Because it's like, there's more money, like, if you have a relative that died of cancer, you know what I mean? Those are the things that, and those are the issues that we have going forward. So we need to have work to do, and I've pledged the support of our city to try and accomplish that. So we all really need to work together on that.
Absolutely.
Joe, when I think of the other hubs, they do have major research universities, and FAU may be going that direction, but they're not there yet. They're not, there's a kind of a top research universities are called Jeffersonian Research Universities, and we have three of them in the state, USF, University of Florida, Florida State. Is there any type of plan in place, and maybe this is something we need to find out, to make FAU a top research.
Well, they are working with FAU. They, but as you well know, them working with FAU and having our state government funded are two different things. And that's why I've had the discussions with the elected officials to let them know that this needs to get accomplished. Because if not, we're going to fall further behind. It's not a situation like, Marcy, you said they achieved their goals. That's fine today, but where are you going to be tomorrow? And that's something that, we didn't work this, like I said, I didn't work this hard, our council didn't work this hard, the rest of the communities around didn't work this hard to have this not be as successful.
It seems like when they develop the patent, the patent is developed someplace else.
Well, that's the problem. Yeah, you develop the patent, and then where does it go from there?
And maybe that is the answer, is to start talking to elected officials and say, "We need to get the appropriate funding." And really, the answer is getting the right professors in there to make FAU a major research institution, but not just in biotechnology, but also in physics.
Right.
And chemistry, and every, and all of it, because.
And FAU has that potential there.
And maybe improvements to their medical school, too, because all three of those universities are Jeffersonian universities, have medical schools.
Right.
So, that may be something that we need to.
That desperately needs to be done. The other thing, I just want to report on a couple of things. We were all at the Big Heart Brigade, helping cook turkeys or packaging them. We helped package them. I didn't want to dare cook them, because then nobody'd eat them, but it was a great event. I want to thank, you know, the Big Heart Brigade and the staff, I know many, whoever was out there, it's providing food for families that wouldn't have Thanksgiving if it wasn't for them, and it's, I'd like to thank Tom Derita, the whole Big Heart Brigade organization. They've really done really well for a long time. The other thing is, I just want to remind everybody, at Sunday here at 4 o'clock, Betty Seider has her Christmas caroling event. It's from 4:00 to 5:00 here. It's not sponsored by the city, it's sponsored by her, and everything is, everybody is welcome. So, I just wanted to pass that along. I'd like to also talk a little bit about the Honda. We've had some exciting things happen with the Honda. They won the Providencia Award, that is given by the tourism development, God bless you. They also, they also won on the PGA Tour, the award for the most fan-friendly event on the PGA Tour. And it's just amazing to have this event. I mean, we gave away $2.5 million last year. Our projections are even better this year, and hopefully, with good weather and everything, we're going to be able to give away more money. The other thing I wanted to let everybody know is that something that's very exciting for me, because as we know, Palm Beach Gardens is portrayed on the television every event. We have always been in the top five. Last year, we, there were two events that had the most viewership, and one of them was Phoenix, and the other one was us. Any FedEx, FedEx Cup Series PGA Tour event, we were number one in TV viewership, along with Phoenix. So that's really, that really is awesome. So that event has really gone to where it's a whole different level. I guess in closing, I just, again, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Ramadan. If you celebrate Festivus, Happy Festivus, whatever you celebrate, okay, it's, to me, always the happiest time of the year, because it's the time we get to spend with our families and so forth. And again, it's just the hope of the new year that everybody always wants to see, and I wish everybody a happy and healthy New Year, and so that we're back here in the beginning of January, celebrating the new year, and having great holidays, and being all together and so forth. And let's hope the year 2015 is a great year, and we're all healthy, and then we're back here in 2016.
Remember winter solstice.
Yes, over, winter solstice.
And you officially beat Marcy tonight in time, so congratulations.
Well, I had you, thank you.
Very nice.
But I didn't even report on that right now.
Eric?
All right, well, I don't have a long list, but we thank the staff for all they did yesterday. I was there early, because I ordered a brand-new menorah for the city, and I put it together last night, and I brought it out, and it's on display now over by the tree. And I just wanted to remind everybody that Hanukkah begins on the 17th, and that means that we light the candles on the evening of the 16th. So I will be out there, and if anybody else would like to join me, we don't have anything formal, nothing, nothing planned, there won't be any food, I'm sorry, Mayor. But, you know, in years past, we had a very, very lavish Hanukkah celebrations, and since the JCC's been in our city, we've kind of given them the opportunity to host official Hanukkah celebrations. But I just wanted you to know, I donated this menorah to the city, and I hope it continues to be here, because in years past, I begged and borrowed menorahs from different places. Chabad has been wonderful, they've always, but I can't do it anymore. So, I decided to, you know, have a permanent one, and so I hope it continues to be lit for decades beyond where I will be here. Anyway, I want to wish everybody Happy Holiday and Happy Hanukkah, and a great New Years, and thank you, Joe, for all those sentiments. I hope we have a great year in 2015.
Eric, I do want to make a disclaimer, that menorah is not made in a slum.
No, it's not. It's not made in stainless steel.
If anybody wants to go out with you and like that, what time will you be doing that on the 16th?
It'll be sunset, so it's going to be around 6:30, 6 o'clock.
Oh, is it sunset is 5 something?
Yeah, 5 something.
You've got to wait until it's down altogether?
I want it to make, get it dark before.
I'll be there, and Bert, I'll bring you a latte.
I'll be there, yeah.
Yeah.
Just let me know the time you'll be there.
Yeah.
I'll be there also.
Maybe we'll bring something.
And thank you for providing the menorah.
No, no, it's my pleasure.
Hopefully, it won't be raining.
Hopefully, it won't, yeah.
Put in a request now, please. Well, there's really nothing else to talk about, I guess. With regards to the Veterans Day programs, I went to the Duncan Middle School program again that they have every year, the day before Veterans Day, and they honor a lot of the retired vets who are in the area with certificates. They call them up on stage. It's really a wonderful event, so I got a chance to attend that again. Our Veterans Day ceremony was fantastic. Thank you to all the veterans and the families that attended, as well as staff, for all your work. The Big Heart Brigade, as Joe had mentioned, was a great event. We certainly enjoy doing that every year with Tommy and his people, and I think this year was 75,000 meals. So, thanks to all the volunteers that continue to come back every year to cook and do all that, because some of the fire guys now are retired, but they still come back and work, so we appreciate their help. The Christmas tree lighting last night was great. Palm Beach Medical Center, Larry Coombs, it just seems like anytime we want to do a public-private partnership, Palm Beach Medical Center is always there, supporting our community in a lot of our children's events and some of these holiday things. So, thanks to the Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center and Larry for his dedication to our city, and the things that he does. It's impressive for the money that they continue to throw out to us, so we can get some of these things done. And the last thing I have is Palm Beach Gardens High School participated in a nationwide contest. This year, that was done by State Farm, where individuals sign on to an email address, log in, and talk about not texting and driving. And it's a campaign that they put on for a period of time throughout the high schools, throughout the entire country, and they award cash prizes to the high schools that have the most participants on a day-to-day basis over a given period of time. And this year, Palm Beach Gardens, actually, I believe, came in ninth place and won a check for $25,000 for the school, which they are presenting tonight at the basketball game. Unfortunately, we couldn't be there. State Farm reps were going to be there with the check for the school. The winning school was from Georgia, and I think they were in first place throughout the entire contest, and they won $100,000. Any high school can get involved, you just, you just got to get the chain mail going and get people involved and active, and I think Gardens might have did it last year but didn't place, but this year, they did. So hopefully, they'll get back in there again and win $25,000, if not $100,000, which you're allowed to do one time, and then you can't win anymore after that. So, great things for the high school. I know Boca Raton, I think, was involved in the contest, maybe some others, but it's free money, you know, and it's for a good cause of committing to not text while you drive, which nobody should be doing anyway, but maybe gets the kids involved in the thought process of not doing that when they're out there on the streets. So, I think they'll do it again next year. You might hear more about it, and I hope there's more schools in our area get involved, because they can certainly use the money in the school board system, from what they're going through, and the magnet programs and athletics and all the things they got to do. So, congratulations to Gardens. I think it's great for them, and it's great to be on the map for that contest and those monies. And Joe, with regards to Betty's event, on Sunday, it's at Burns Road, 4 o'clock, and it will be outside, right in front of the entryway. So, they've got, I think they have carols, they have singers there, they have a band there, there's a lot of different churches from the area involved, so hopefully, Eric will deliver a no rainy night, and it's really a nice event. So for an hour, it's worth it to get out there and listen and feel good about the holiday season, so. You're being umbrellas. You're being umbrellas, we'll go back inside. And that's all I have, and I certainly think it's been a good year for the city. The council here, we've done a lot of work, we still have more work to do, but we certainly want to pass along our sincere appreciation of your support on the things that we've done. We hope everybody has a great holiday season, a great new year. We look forward to 2015, getting back to work, beating up the city manager, and doing the things that we do best to keep the city, I got to, I got to throw that in there, to keep the city moving forward and really keeping it in a, in a place where it's beautiful, respected, and people enjoy being here, if not moving here. So thank you for your efforts. Thank you to all our partners in the community and our residents. So best wishes for everybody for a holiday, a good holiday season. And I'll wrap it up and pass it off to the city manager for your report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items here to go by real quick. As you know, last month, November the 6th, the city council extended funding the stormwater infrastructure mapping inspection system, inspecting and finding all of the stormwater structures owned by the city. This picture that you see now illustrates why we're doing this. This is some of the debris that you will find in various manholes throughout the city, stormwater drains throughout the city. They've located 800 of them so far, and as you know, there were probably 400, we didn't know we have, but we're finally mapping them down, and they're doing the inspections. These have already been cleaned out, and in a conversation with the mayor, he indicated to us to wash these things off, take the aluminum and the plastic and recycle everything, but sell the aluminum. So we'll be looking at that, Mr. Mayor, as an additional revenue source. Alan. Next, we'd like to show you a little bit of what's going on on Buttercup Circle. This is, you know, as we have explained, we have some capability of responding to complaints of residents with some difficulty in standing water in the driveways. Our crews go in, this is a result of several collapsed pipes. So the crew goes in, our own crews replace the pipes, reshape, put the swells back in order. This one will be done by December, the end of this week, tomorrow is expected to be finished. And just to show you that we do what we can with the swells throughout the city with the funds that we have. Also, we got some very good publicity from the local media, from the Palm Beach Post and was Channel 12, Channel 12, 5, you know, 512, 25, and all of those about the new program that we have, this raids online for the citizens, but also the ATAC raids for our police officers in forecasting where crime may occur based on analysis of past events. But I just want everyone to know, if they want to go, they can get online here, even they have a mobile app as well. So if the residents want to check out what's happening in their community and what's going on, they can, they can do that online. And it was funded by the foundation, I think it was. That was a great addition that the foundation funded. It's a huge help to our officers in the field, and if the residents want to use it, it could be a huge help to them to know what's going on in their neighborhoods, and we're happy to have it and happy to do this for our residents, and trying to make our citizens feel safe throughout the community. That's, that's our job, and we appreciate this program. It's, it's a real good data-sharing program. Next, you all already stole my thunder about Natalie Crowley and her excellent presentation representing the city of Palm Beach Gardens and the growth and development in this area that's being recognized all over the county. And we want to thank you, Natalie, for taking the time to prepare for this. I know it was above and beyond the normal hours, and we appreciate your representing the city as well as you do, and thank you for that. Next, I just want to let everyone know, starting Friday, tomorrow, from 11 to 7, and then Saturday from 9 to 4, our 31st Annual Holiday Bazaar, great crafts over there, and you all want to go over there and get your Christmas presents early. Bert, that might help you out, if you wanted to go to Target, who was?
No, I'm stuck in the gardens alone now, I got, I got to move on.
Okay. And last, but certainly not least, is the holiday joy drive put on by the police department and foundation and employees over there. This is 12 years now that this has been going on, and this provides for the needs for underprivileged children and their families throughout Palm Beach Gardens. We actually get the list from the schools themselves of the children that need the assistance and the help. So if you want to donate clothing, or gift cards, or a new toy, you can drop those off at City Hall, Burns Road, Riverside Youth enrichment, Police Headquarters, or any Palm Beach Gardens fire station to help the needy children throughout the community. We do need volunteers, and you see here, if you'd like to volunteer to come and wrap gifts, there's a phone number and email for you to contact. And if this goes by too fast, Chief Step is here, he'll be happy to let you know when and where to come and help wrap presents and gifts. I'm done.
Yeah, we're not going to be there again.
That's new clothing, right? New clothing?
Yes.
New clothing, unwrapped toys.
Don't bring...
And that's my report for this evening.
Okay, any questions, the city manager? Comments in the public? I have, actually had two tonight, we talked about them on the bus shelter, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Well, before we talk about consent, I need to pull one item from the consent, and that is because I'm going to recuse myself, and that is Resolution 72-2014.
Which item is that?
Item F.
Move consent with the exception of item F.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say why I was going to recuse myself. I'm recusing myself because the company that my husband works for did the plat for this.
Okay. Now, David, do your...
I actually already have the motion, so.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0.
Item F is a plat, do we need a...
Get a motion. Mr. Chairman, move Resolution 72-2014.
Second.
Motion, two seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0.
Mayor, may I please read the title?
Give me?
May I please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Read the title of Resolution 72-2014.
Resolution 72-2014, a resolution the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the Azure Development Plat, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Mr. Chairman, move... We can do it backwards, huh? Yeah, Chairman, move Resolution 72-2014.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0. Next up is Ordinance 14-2014, will a clerk read the title?
Ordinance 14-2014, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the city of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2013, and ending September 30, 2014 inclusive, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing effective date for the purposes.
Can open the public hearing and ask for a staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, and Ordinance 14 is our final end-of-year budget amendment for fiscal year 2013-2014. Basically, one of the things, one of the processes that we do at the end of each year, when we prepare our final financial statements, is to review the statements to make sure that certain financial transactions that are required for accounting purposes are properly reflected in the budget. And one of the other things, areas that we look at, is to make sure that we're in compliance with the legal levels of budgetary control, which in our case is at the fund level. So in performing that review, we found just two things that we need to adjust. And one is in, the first one is in the general fund, and that has to do with recording a lease purchase agreement that actually council approved back in December 2012. We took delivery of these, the pieces of equipment you see before you, in December 2013, and started making the payments on that equipment at that time. Under government accounting procedures, we're required to post an accounting entry to the financial statements to record the amount of capital outlay as an expenditure, and the offset is to record a revenue source, which is called other financing sources. The total debt that was incurred was $1,022,611. As I said, those first payments were properly budgeted for in 2014 and began in December of 2013. So what this amendment in the general fund accomplishes tonight is to record that $1,022,611 of capital outlay in the fire department with an offsetting revenue called other financing sources of the same amount. So again, it's a housekeeping, kind of a cleanup type of an entry with no effect or impact on the city's fund balance. Again, it's just for presentation purposes. When you get the final audited statements in March or April, you'll see that the expenditure that matches the budget amount. The last area that we're requesting an adjustment deals with levels of control, and as I said, that's at the fund level. And in our golf special revenue fund, when we close the books, actual expenditures totaled about $1.656 million. The adopted budget was $1,516,68, so exceeded by about $140,000. However, this overage is offset by actual revenues, which exceeded our estimates by about $142,000. And I know, as you remember, the last fiscal year, we were closed so many months, about seven months, that when we're putting the budget together initially, it was our best estimate at the time of what our actual operations would be based upon closure for the estimated timeline that we were looking at. So the bottom line is, what we're requesting then is an adjustment to golf fund revenues by about $141,863, and increase expenditures by $140,054. So the net effect is very minor as far as the impact on the golf special revenue fund financial statements, about a $2,000 increase in the reserve balance at the end of last fiscal year. And with that, staff recommends approval, Ordinance 14-2014. Be happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions, Alan? I know the expenses were higher, but that's nice to see that revenue number, considering we were closed for a while.
Again, you know, when we're putting the budget together for 13, 14, it's, you know, early in, you know, March, April, May of 2013. So we're projecting out, so we felt...
It's still a great revenue number, which is fantastic, so.
Which is good, yeah.
Nice job at the golf course, everybody. Anybody wishing to speak for, against this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or a vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Ordinance 14-2014, first reading.
Second.
Got a motion in three seconds, wow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 5-0. Thank you, Alan. No resolutions tonight, items for council action discussion. I just want to remind everybody that our first meeting next year is not on the first Thursday, is actually on January, which is the first, yeah. So if you come here, probably nobody's going to be here. But it will be on January 8, 2015, again, at 7:00 PM, so please make a note if you're going to be here. Any other council actions, items for discussion, anything? Nope. City Attorney report?
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, et cetera. Everybody has a great time.
And before we end, I just want to thank you for your support of the Veterans Tournament, it was very nice, and we appreciate you being involved and being a partner in the city as well, so thank you.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
I'll move with you, Eric.
Got a motion...
Second.
Motion, two and a half seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 5-0. Good night, happy holidays, everybody.